Good evening, welcome to the April 27th Valley View School Board Meeting. Mr. Vinagis, would you please lead us in the pledge? I ask everybody to rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we take any action here, we have to replace Member Hanson as a secretary for this evening, so a motion would be in order.
Motion that Debbie Sekora become the president of the secretary.
Make Debbie Sekora the secretary for this evening? Motion seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. The ayes have it. Thank you. Board affirmation statement. Mr. Gugis, if you would kindly.
Our mission is to ensure that all students are prepared for college and a successful life academically, socially, and emotionally, as well as equipped with the necessary tools to have options and make decisions about their long-term goals. This will be accomplished by believing and working towards all students learning through rigorous curricula and meaningful, effective instruction, consequently demonstrating mastery on high-quality assessments with all stakeholders being held accountable throughout the process.
Thank you. Motion would be in order to do the agenda. Dr. Mitchum?
Yes, Mr. Quigley, I'd like to ask that the board approve the agenda as presented.
Motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. The ayes have it. Dr. Mitchum, consent agenda items.
Yes, I'd like to ask the board to approve consent agenda items 5-1 through 5-6. 5-1, board meeting minutes, April 13th, 2015. 5-2, executive session meeting minutes, April 13th, 2015. 5-3, gifts for Jonas Salk and Tippet Elementary School. 5-4, trips for Bolingbrook High School. 5-5, student activities and contract for Bolingbrook High School with home team marketing. And 5-6, resolution number 1520, semi-annual review of executive session minutes to determine need for continued confidential treatment and authorization of destruction of executive session tapes more than 18 months old.
Motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and seconded. Any discussion? If not, roll call vote, please.
Member Vinagis?
Yes.
Member Campbell?
Yes.
Member Sekora?
Yes.
Member Felice?
Yes.
Vice President Gugis?
Yes.
President Quigley?
Yes. Pillars of Valley View. I don't have my pillar sheet in front of me. Actually, I do. I had notes written on the back right there. Romeoville High School. Mr. Gugis, if you would please. Vice President Gugis. And Mr. Kinder?
Good evening, President Quigley, Vice President Gugis, Secretary Sekora, members of the board, Dr. Mitchum, senior leadership, members of the audience, and members of the community. There she is. Alright. On behalf of the Valley View School Board and Romeoville High School, I would like to introduce Mrs. Nicole Boudreau as our selection to be recognized as a pillar of Valley View. So Nicole. Mrs. Boudreau is truly an asset to Romeoville High School. She is an excellent teacher with a drive and passion to better herself and everyone else around her. Nikki is a very well-respected member of the Romeoville High School English Department, and she's currently filling many roles at Romeoville High School, some of which listed is she is our reading team leader, she's a member of the District English Assessment Committee, she's a student leadership sponsor, and also a new teacher mentor. Nikki is extremely dedicated and extremely hardworking. She is also very creative and always willing to try something new to push our students to the next level. Speaking on behalf of all of us up here, it is truly a pleasure to work with Nikki, and it's our honor to present her as a pillar of Valley View. Congratulations, Nikki, and thank you for everything that you do.
Next up, Beverly Scoff, Member Vinagis.
Good evening, board members, Dr. Mitchum, and Valley View community. It is my honor to introduce Scoff's pillar of Valley View, Mrs. Beth Rizzuto. She's been a teacher, a 4th grade teacher at Beverly Scoff for the past 10 years. Prior to that, Beth taught 5th grade and enrichment in District 104 for four years. Beth and her husband John are parents of two amazing girls. While that in itself could keep anyone busy, she found time to pursue her master's degree in administration through Benedictine University in 2008 where she received her Type 75 certification. Beth was nominated by her colleagues for this honor for several reasons. Not only is Beth an asset to her students and families at Scoff, but also to her peers. Beth has taken it upon herself to increase morale and build a sense of community and belonging at Scoff. Beth can frequently be seen after school working with students not only academically, but also engaging them in many craft-like activities. It's through these types of activities that Beth builds amazing bonds with her students. Here are a few things her students had to say about her. "I like Mrs. Rizzuto because she makes learning fun for us." "I enjoy listening to her read books with great expression," which I can attest to. "She really has helped me improve my reading this year through using many strategies." "I like that she conferences with me alone so I can explain my learning." As you can tell, she is highly respected not only by her colleagues, but by her students as well. I'm proud to introduce to you Beth Rizzuto as a pillar of Valley View.
And last, but certainly not least, Woodview. Member Campbell.
President Quigley, board members, Dr. Mitchum, Valley View community, it is an honor to present, it is an honor to present Amy Cizerniak as Woodview's Valley View pillar of excellence. Amy Cizerniak began her career serving middle school students and eagerly sought out her current position as a teacher within the Woodview CARES program two years ago. During her current position as a teacher within the Woodview CARES program, she has made great impact on students both academically and socially, emotionally. She has helped students to work to meet their potential and to mainstream out of the CARES program. Mrs. Cizerniak demonstrates flexibility, understanding, and a true care for the students and families. She communicates with families on a regular basis, working to meet the needs of her students within the learning environment, as well as to assist families within their home lives. Mrs. Cizerniak is always willing to work with her peers and teammates, accepting feedback, support, and suggestions in a positive light. She demonstrates such great understanding of the students' needs and learning styles. She is able to adapt her classroom schedule and even her teaching methods to situations that occur at a moment's notice. Mrs. Cizerniak's dedication, passion, and care for her students and the CARES program are truly evident each day. The student progress is an attribute to her success, and for that, we are proud to introduce you to Amy Cizerniak, Woodview and Valley View's pillar of excellence.
Next up, BHS Boys Basketball State Finals. Gentlemen. Mr. Rose, as they gather to the back and come around the front.
Good evening, President Quigley, members of the board, Dr. Mitchum, senior leadership, and members of the Valley View community. Very happy to be here tonight as we honor our boys' basketball team who, for the first time in school history, made it down to the IHSA State Finals and took third place. Not going to take very long before I introduce Coach Brost, but I do want to express my sincere thanks to senior leadership, the district, certainly my team, my administrative team at Bolingbrook High School for being so supportive of our student athletes and our coaching staff. Very thankful and appreciative to have such great students at Bolingbrook and great coaches who represent not only our school, but our district and our community so well. I could not be more proud. So, thank you to our coaches and our students who are here tonight. Very, very thankful. So, with that said, I want to introduce our head boys' basketball coach, Mr. Rob Brost.
Thank you very much, members of the board, Dr. Mitchum, and thank you, Mr. Rose, for that introduction. This year was a special year for us, not only on the floor, but off, and I'm just fortunate to be a part of this group and to coach these young men, and I'm going to talk about some of them that are here, but first, I want to introduce my coaching staff that is here with me. The first is Coach Paul Gamicia in the red. He's our varsity assistant. Dominic Tapia.
Come on in, guys, we can see you on the TV.
Mr. Bear Timmer, who's our head sophomore coach. At this time, I'd like to introduce our three all-state players that are here tonight and tell you just a little bit about them, and then I'll introduce the rest of the team as well. The first one is Mr. Julian Torres. He averaged 11 points and nine rebounds a game. He was special mention all-state. He was a Voyager Media All-Star. He was also selected to play in the City Suburban All-Star Game and ahead of, originally committed to Wisconsin-Green Bay, has committed to the University of Illinois at Chicago on a full scholarship. So Julian Torres. Next young man I would like to introduce is Mr. Broderick Thomas. He's a fourth-team all-stater. He had a high game of 30 points against Hillcrest, who at the time was ranked in the top 10, who incidentally, we beat rather handily. He was a first-team all-tournament member at the Decatur-Turkey Tournament. He was first-team all-tournament at the McDipper Holiday Classic. He was first-team all-Southwest Suburban Conference. He was second-team all-Joliet Herald. He was second-team Voyager Media. He was selected to play in the Voyager Media All-Star Game, and most recently has committed to play basketball on a full scholarship at Truman State University. Broderick Thomas. Next young man I'd like to introduce is Mr. Prentice Nixon. He is a 1,000-point scorer, one of only five in school history to score over 1,000 points. He's a McDonald's All-American nominee. He was a finalist for Mr. Basketball. He is either, I'll have to check with Mr. Paul on this, either the all-time winningest or second all-time winningest player in the school's history. He was first-team all-Decatur-Turkey Tournament, first-team all-McDipper Holiday Classic. He scored 35 points against Niqua Valley the first time. He scored 31 against Plainfield East. He scored 33 against Niqua Valley the second time, in which he had eight 3-pointers, which I also believe is a school record. He's a first-team all-conference selection, first-team all-state selection, second-team all-state by the Sun Times, second-team all-state by the Chicago Tribune, Joliet Herald Player of the Year, Voyager Media Player of the Year, selected to play in the Voyager Media All-Star Game, and he was selected to play in the City Suburban All-Star Game. He most recently has committed to Colorado State University, and incidentally, I believe he is the most decorated basketball player in the history of Bolingbrook High School. Prentice Nixon. I'm sorry to do this to the three guys that are here, but now you've got to follow that. We have three members of our team with us. The first is sophomore Brandon Lawani. Junior Clifton Smith. And the final young man that is here this evening is Senior Jabari Mangram. In closing, I would just like to say it's been a special, special season, mostly because of the young men that are before you, but I want to give special thanks to our coaching staff, as well as Mr. Rose, and in addition to Mayor Claire, who has been tremendously supportive throughout this entire season and for my career here at Bolingbrook High School. And lastly, I want to thank the community as a whole, who was, we couldn't have done it without them. We had a parade, we had a rally when we got back, so it's just been a great experience all the way around. And members of the board and Dr. Mitchum, thank you all for having us tonight. It's been a pleasure. Thank you very much.
For those of you who don't know, if you have the chance to talk to some of these young men after a game or something, you know, Prentice was being interviewed by some reporter after the game at BHS, and there was a little kid, could have been his cousin, could have been a friend of the family, whatever, little kid probably eight or nine years old. He put the reporter off to talk to the little guy. That's important. He has his, he's grounded and understands the right things to do. The reporter would wait, the little kid wanted to give him a high five and a hug, and I thought that was pretty cool. They didn't tell you guys have to wait till the end of the meeting before you go home, did they? Kidding, kidding. As they leave, we will start with liaison reports from my right. Any and all, please. From my left.
I have, trying to pull it up here right now, I have Students of the Month for Wilco. For the month of March, we have, I gotta read my notes. I'm going to have to defer and bring it up later. I'll send them over to Shelley so we can get them posted. I'm having trouble.
Just that next week, remember, we have a board meeting that will be next week, not two weeks from now, and before that board meeting will be a curriculum committee meeting.
I have none. Next up, audience participation. Anybody from the audience wish to address the board this evening? Please state your name and where you are from.
Good evening, members of the board, senior leadership, Dr. Mitchum, and members of the community. My name is Gretchen Vacco, and you probably remember me from last meeting when I spoke on behalf of the low-incidence program at RC Hill, and I wanted to give you an update. First, I want to thank everyone for listening to my concerns and answering questions regarding the changes to the low-incidence program. After that meeting, Dr. Mitchum, Mrs. Kinder, and Mrs. Ekstrom observed and gathered feedback from all the members of the team that very next day, including our paraprofessionals. During this meeting, we had an opportunity to collaborate and identify solutions that took into account the unique needs of our students, our classrooms at RC Hill, while also remaining true to the universal low-incidence support throughout the district. A fourth classroom will remain, utilizing the projected supports and in collaboration with the RC Hill team, creative solutions were identified to meet the needs I spoke about at the last meeting. Thank you again for having an opening mind and hearing our concerns. We believe we collaboratively reached the best outcome for our students, and we thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, all. I'm Betty Girard, and I'm from the staff program, and I'm here to address the board tonight. I just wanted you, as board members, to know that the community holds you personally responsible for the expenditures that are from our district, as well as the way in which the money is being spent. I personally feel that we are a district of accountability, and we want our board to be accountable to us. I want to see something in documentation. I want to see where, if you tell me that two co-teachers are better than a paraprofessional and a teacher, I want to, it's been three years now, is there a report? Have you asked to see one? Alright, and then I want to know, let the public know what the results are. There are programs that have been put into place that could be very good, but we want to see where the results are, and if there has been any significant difference in anything. Alright, so, board members, you stated at the last meeting, and which I'm so glad that something, somebody did listen to somebody last time, you stated at the last meeting, when you voted, you said yes to the rifts, and that it would be provided that there was tabling, alright, and it was being brought back for you for discussion. I want to know, did that happen? Or is it going to happen? Is that a clandestine meeting? Or is it open to the public? I want to see some results of it. I don't think, and the people that, my peers, we don't really feel that we've been treated very fairly at all. Every time that there is a cut, it is always in the area of paraprofessionals. Okay, and it might be very well justified. Well, let us see it. And who's doing the reporting, and in terms of the decisions that are being made. I, along with my other union members, would like to see that. I'd like for there to be more accountability with the board. And once again, let me say, if you tabled it, are there any notes from the discussion? What was the outcome of the discussion? And for the meeting tonight, there would be more people here tonight if we had known that there was going to be a meeting. I just happened to haphazardly find out that there is a meeting, but most people don't even know. Is it published? Who published it? Where is it published? This is supposed to be community and community effort, and we are really, 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 really tired every year of being riffed and told it was a management decision without any details of it. And, well, that's it. Thank you.
Just because it's my last meeting, I can't help it. I agree that we are fiduciary, we have a fiduciary responsibility. First, we didn't table it. The rift last month was approved, and Dr. Mitchum said he would look into the things going on at RC Hill. I think we've heard from a staff member there that he did such, and that happened. In terms of programs, we look at programs constantly. Every program that comes up here, I personally ask, basically, what is the ROI? What is our return on investment? What are we going to see different in our district afterwards? Member Sekora dug into Odyssey and led the charge to change some issues with that, so we do that regularly. In terms of, is the parapro verse co-teacher, the data's been given, it's been presented at this board, but we can get that to you. You have six days left. I'll make sure you get that. I'm sure we have.
Yeah, we do it periodically throughout the year, so we gave a report in the spring showing the increases in the gains from co-teaching, and we'll be happy to share that information with you again. And it is publicly posted on Board Docs, which you can access from our homepage.
And in terms of our meetings, they are, with the exception of this past, this next meeting, because we had to move it to be in clients with, to be in compliance with the law on when the new board members are seated, our meeting schedule is published on our website, it's published here on a wall, it's printed out, it's in accordance with the law. I would say this meeting's probably been known for
Ten months.
A year.
A year, that this meeting would be available. But if you can think of another way that we can let folks know, by all means, let us know.
Okay, and then one, I have to tell you, go back, listen to your notes, when you took that vote, you said yes, and several board members said, if we could bring it back to the table in terms of discussion, alright, so, what was the result of that?
I think we heard from a staff member what the results of that conversation were, but I guess, Dr. Mitchum, if you want to add more to that, you could.
My understanding of our communication is exactly yours. The initial concern was whether or not we were going to support RC Hill as a result of the issues that were brought to our attention. We also, the board also voted to riff the aids. Mr. Quigley indicated that if there was a need to bring back those aids at a later date, that we could do that if we so chose, but if we did not riff at the last board meeting, then we could not riff as a result of our timelines.
Okay, I'm misunderstanding also because my vote, and I think that when Member Sekora was making that vote also, that she was saying that she was going to do a no unless we did. So my understanding is that we were going to have conversation about this tonight. That's what I voted on, and I think that that's what, when I was asking Member Sekora how her vote was going, that that was going to be conversation tonight. That's my understanding, and that's why I'm here with a bro, to tonight, to have that conversation.
So just to try and clarify what happened at the last board meeting, there was a resolution presented for a rift, which included the discussion that we had at the last meeting about affected employees. That resolution was voted on and approved unanimously. If we want to come back and have a follow-up discussion, that's perfectly fine, but it's not going to impact the outcome of that resolution. That was a final action taken at the last meeting.
Dr. Mitchum, I think just for sake of clarity, would you mind recapping what you did afterwards and kind of add on to?
As we indicated we would, we went to RC Hill, and we spent approximately four hours, primarily in the classrooms, communicating with the teachers individually. I personally spoke to each of the four teachers at RC Hill. We understood the issue was concerning class sizes, and clearly, the class sizes at RC Hill are well within the state guidelines of 13 per class. The intangibles that we were not aware of, that the visit allowed to shed light on, is actually their physical space. And so even though the class sizes were more than appropriate when examining their physical space and the needs of the children and the amount of adults that would be required to be in those classrooms, it became crystal clear to me that the issue surrounding why there was a need for a fourth classroom had more to do with the physical space and the layout of the rooms in question, rather than the teacher's capacity to be able to deliver instruction in a meaningful way using the resources that were provided them. But it became clear to me as well that if we were to reduce those classrooms to three spaces as opposed to four, it was described to me, and not only described to me, I witnessed where the classroom atmosphere could be described as chaotic, simply because the space did not provide for the amount of supports required for each of those kids in the space provided. If those rooms were maybe double the size... If those rooms were maybe double the size, then we would have been able to potentially reduce the classrooms to three. But clearly, those types of intangibles are not visible to senior administration at the time that we're making results based on numbers. What we did learn, however, from this, or what I did learn, however, from this, is that it's from our helicopter viewpoint, things look like they fall into place perfectly based on data and numbers. But I think we need to do, what I've learned is that we need to do a better job of actually engaging our teachers in the realities of the decisions we're making, rather than make them purely based on what we perceive to be appropriate information as it relates to state guidelines, numbers, supports, et cetera. And so, I think that's the reason why there was a change in our decision, because simply the space did not provide for the teachers to be able to appropriately support those kids.
So, based on that visit, you deemed it necessary to be in agreement with staff and bring the fourth classroom back?
Absolutely. It did prevent another set of challenges, and again, the staff was willing to work with us on how to resolve those challenges as a result of opening a new classroom. But I think, between the staff and the administration, we were able to come to a viable solution.
But you did not feel the need to bring to the board to recall more parapros?
In the process, we did hire, I think, how many? Two? Two part-time parapros, and we also provided one full-time back for a classroom, or just the two-part-time?
Just the two-part-time, and those have not been filled yet.
Yeah, so it did allow for greater parapro support.
Did you say hire, or we bring them back, or when you say hire?
No.
They've not been filled yet. We've given the positions to them, but they're not filled because we have to go through the involuntary transfer, callback list, and placement, and then the rifts.
Thank you.
Thank you for the discussion.
Please.
Hi, members of the board and community. I'm Eric Exstrom. I'm the Executive Director of Student Services for Special Education. I want to let you know that throughout the year, we're continually looking at our numbers and reevaluating class sizes as well as student needs. So, even though we spoke specifically to R.C. Hill, in this past week, we've had students who have moved in, who have necessitated an increase in paraprofessional support, whether that's one-to-one aides, as well as as we're increasing enrollment, either students are found eligible, our numbers are consistently changing. So, I just want to let you know that even though we discussed last week regarding the numbers we had at the time of allocations, as those shifts, we regularly make adjustments as well. So, additions have even been made since the last board meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you.
An example of that is that we had to open another CARES classroom at Woodview due to some enrollment changes. So, it's a very fluid process, and we make those adjustments as necessary.
Previously in this conversation, you referred to me as being at the meeting. I was not at the last meeting due to a work conflict, but it was Member Goojus you were referring to, but I get it.
My mistake, I called him you as well.
At night, you didn't.
Rick always has a better tie than I have on.
This tie has history.
Next up, if there's no further comments, action reports, student due process. Dr. Mitchum?
Yes, Mr. President. I ask that the board approve student due process cases A through F as presented.
Motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, seeing none. Roll call vote, please.
Member Vanegas?
Yes.
Member Campbell?
Yes.
Member Sikora?
Yes.
Member Felice?
Yes.
Vice President Goojus?
Yes.
President Quigley?
Yes. Next up, Ms. Kinder?
Yes, sir. Action Report 10.1, we are presenting two board policies for second reading and approval. The first is 6230 Library Media Center and 6235 Access to Electronic Networks.
Motion?
So moved.
Second.
Second? All those, oh, I'm sorry. Any discussion? Hearing none, seeing none. Roll call vote, please.
Member Vanegas?
Yes.
Member Campbell?
Yes.
Member Sikora?
Yes.
Member Felice?
Yes.
Vice President Goojus?
Yes.
President Quigley?
Yes. Mr. Ghazafi?
No actions this evening.
Thank you. Ms. Hawkes?
Thank you, President Quigley. Action Report 12.1, Consolidated Action Report for Certified and Classified Personnel. We're seeking your approval on 87 items for certified personnel, 61 for classified personnel, and one item for administrative classified personnel.
Motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion seconded. Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Member Vanegas?
Yes.
Member Campbell?
Yes.
Member Sikora?
Yes.
Member Felice?
Yes.
Vice President Goojus?
Yes.
President Quigley?
Yes.
Action Report 12.2, Resolution Number 1518. We're seeking the board's approval for the authorization and dismissal of educational support personnel employee for reasons other than reduction in force.
So moved.
Second.
Motion seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, seeing none. Roll call vote, please.
Member Vanegas?
Yes.
Member Campbell?
Yes.
Member Sikora?
Yes.
Member Felice?
Yes.
Vice President Goojus?
Yes.
President Quigley?
Yes.
Our final action report this evening, 12.3, is Resolution Number 1519. We're seeking the board to authorize the notice of charges and dismissal of a tenured teacher from employment for reasons other than reduction in force, and to suspend said teacher without pay pending completion of the dismissal process.
So moved.
Second. Motion seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, seeing none. Roll call vote, please.
Member Vanegas?
Yes.
Member Campbell?
Yes.
Member Sikora?
Yes.
Member Felice?
Yes.
Vice President Goojus?
Yes.
President Quigley?
Yes. Information reports.
Three information reports tonight, beginning with the SOC Elementary School Site Improvements, Phase Two. The SOC Elementary parking lot has reached what we'll term the end of its serviceable life. The asphalt pavement has contributed to what could be considered hazardous conditions for vehicular traffic. And so, we took this opportunity to address other significant issues related to site circulation and site infrastructure. Phase One was completed last summer and included expansion of the east parking lot to support 30 additional parking spots for staff and visitors. We also increased the queuing length on-site for parent drop-off and pickup. Phase Two, which is the current proposal, will relocate the bus drop-off to the west and provide a secondary parking lot, and further enhance vehicular circulation. In order to optimize savings in the project, we're including reclaimed asphalt in all of the bid documents to reuse the asphalt that's currently there, to be ground up and used as a, for a 12-inch-thick aggregate sub-base, depending on the location depth in the bid docs. We'll bid this starting this month. Bids are anticipated to be received by May 15th. Estimated construction costs not to exceed $350,000. Project costs will be incorporated into the FY 15-16 Building Operations and Maintenance Budget for work to begin this summer. We anticipate bringing this action to you on the May, at the May 26th board meeting.
Assistant Principal Bruno, is it bad? It's bad, okay. Information Report 13.2 is a kitchen equipment bid for Nutrition Services, replacing 24 pieces of equipment at nine sites, as listed there. We've got some elementary school steamers, which are being purchased as the second phase, first being purchased, first phase being purchased in school year 14 to replace 20-to-30-year-old stoves, making our kitchens more efficient in both labor and energy. Also, replacing a dish machine at RHS, which was well beyond its useful life, originally purchased in 1974. So, fair to say we did get our money's worth out of that. All of these items are included in the Nutrition Services Department FY 15 budget, and you see the bid summary there. We are recommending the low bidder, Edward Don and Company out of Woodridge, a base bid of $94,655.74. The other bid there, Douglas Equipment, did not include the dish machine. When we looked at the price of the dish machine cost provided by Edward Don and backed that out, they actually still were the low bidder by over $1,400. Lastly, is a proposed multi-student family discount credit on student fees. A year ago, we had presented a multi-year student discount, I'm sorry, student fee schedule for the next three years, including this current year that we're in. Many meetings to discuss the most efficient way to go about this, recognizing that having three or more students in our school system and being asked to pay registration fees presents a, could present a hefty burden for many of our families. And so, the proposal before you tonight would provide a $10 per student registration fee credit for elementary students pre-K through five, $15 per student registration fee credit for middle schoolers, and a $20 per student registration fee credit for high schoolers. Again, this would be for families that have three or more students actively enrolled in Valley View. There'd be no paperwork that would need to be completed or filled out. And again, it's really geared toward helping defray registration costs when registering, again, three or more students. And looking at all of the data that we could, we anticipate this would affect about 1,642 families, or roughly just over 16% of our households within our district. Assistant Superintendent Ghazafi, one, thank you for the follow-up. I know we had a long discussion about this last year. Let me just give you an example, and you can tell me how this would work out for a family. Let's say a family had a fifth grader who was getting ready to attend AVM in the fall, and she decided that she wanted to play the saxophone, and she has two younger brothers and sisters in the school district. How much of a registration fee credit would be given to said family that may be my family? Just curious.
In that case, you'd have a middle schooler and two elementary students. You would have a $35 credit.
Okay, because the band thing was like $137, so that was just the rental of the sax. But I can get, I'll get $30, so...
$35 automatically.
So, $35, okay. So, this only applies to households that have three or more students?
Correct.
Okay. And the rationale there is?
We looked at, how do we, what kind of discount we'd provide in terms of, would it be fair to be a percentage or a dollar figure? And when would the credit be applied? Because oftentimes, we've got families that take advantage of what we call a deferred payment plan. So, when would that discount be applied? We would want to certainly make sure that we were paid first in full before a discount would be applied. We've got oftentimes, student athletes or co-curricular participation that may not occur till the spring. And so, if we put a threshold on it, a dollar figure, let's say $250, they may not reach that threshold until the spring when they're paying their co-curricular fee. And again, we didn't want to have to monitor this continually throughout the course of the year. We thought, what's the fairest way? Again, where's the burden? When families walk into our building during back-to-school days, they're being asked to register two elementary kids and two students and a middle schooler, they're having to, you know, spend a lot of money. And we just said, this would be the cleanest way to go about applying a credit, or a discount, if you will, to the student fees that they would incur.
Because at one point, we were discussing a potential cap. And so, I guess a cap would necessarily be tied to the number of students. It'd be tied, so this is in place of the cap?
It would be in place of the cap. Again, we spent many meetings trying to come up with what we felt would be the easiest to understand for our frontline folks who attend either BTS or in the schools every day with parents coming in, wanting to either pay fees or what have you. What we could accommodate in terms of our student accounting system, our student receivable package, if you will, what we can implement, again, with relative ease.
I only have a question, because I want to make sure I understand, I'm all for it. It's 50, like in the example you gave, it would be $55 per child taken off their fee?
No, that would be a total, total family discount, right.
Total, okay, because that, it kind of was, it's a $55 discount to be applied across each child's account.
Well, again, in that example, we had a second grader, fifth grader, eighth grader, and 11th grader. So, I think it would be $10, $10, $15, and $20. So, each student, as they would register them, because BTS occurs on different days, automatically, that a credit would be applied at that student's location.
So, it's 55 dollars total, not per student?
Correct.
I see the confusion there, Member Sikora. I see that.
And again, one of the difficulties, a fair question, one of the difficulties we had is, when would the discount, you know, how would we apply a discount if it was a cap? So, parent comes in, registers the elementary student first, then they might go to the middle school, and then they get to the high school, or they get to the second middle school, let's say, or, again, when would it kick in? In this way, we automatically know which families have multiple students in our district. It's flagged right away, the credit gets applied when the student fee letters are going out. So, they'll get the credit without having to even show up at BTS if they're utilizing mail-in registration.
Two quick questions. First, you're starting to answer. My first question is the communication part. It's not up to the family to say, hey, remember, I got three people, all right? So, it's going to be in the system, and the system will be talking, because if there's a kid in an elementary, a kid in a middle school, and a kid in a high school, the system's going to recognize that and automatically spit it back up when they register their respective kids, correct?
When we send out that information even before registration, letting them know what their fees are, that credit will be applied.
Okay. And then, secondly, there's no bearing on the financial status of the family. If they've got three kids, they're going to get a discount. They don't have to write...
Correct.
It's anybody that has the three kids in the district.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
You know, I think we know what we were trying to do, and I would just ask you, Mr. Ghazafi, and the board, to continue to review this and do a post-mortem on this and see if that worked out, how, you know, we wanted it to work out after this shift.
One of the questions was, you know, could be, what is the impact? And we estimate, based on our current student load, that the discount could amount to $76,700. And so, again, we're trying to soften the blow for those families that have multiple students, recognizing that everybody would qualify, not just those that, you know, maybe are in a certain economic situation. Again, a lot of discussion about what's fair, how do we, how are we fair across, you know, across the board?
I think this just speaks on behalf of how senior leadership and the board is doing everything they can to help. I mean, that's a, it's a huge risk and a huge hit to our budget, where we're already struggling to say it best. But we're doing everything we can to minimize the impact for the families of this district. Maybe in one household, it's $50, or $30, or whatever the case may be. But when you put it out to the, across the district, when you're talking $76,000, that's a huge budget hit. So, I think that just speaks to the volume of what this team is doing to help the families in the district.
Any other comments? If not, legal services report.
No report, but I'd like to thank both of our outgoing board members for their service time on the board. It was a pleasure to work with you and my colleagues, and I appreciate your leadership. Thank you.
Luke, it's definitely been my pleasure working with you. No pleats. Luke never wears pleats in his pants.
Do you guys want a hug?
Afterwards.
You can hug afterwards.
I have on pleats.
Association reports. You can get to the hug portion here in a minute. Association report, AFT? Thank you. Valley View Council? Valley View Office Council? Thank you. Old business. Any new business before the board? This where you want to do the hug thing?
No, we'll do it later.
Okay, do that. Any questions from the public on actions we have taken this evening? Please come forward.
Well, it's basically just a letter that I wrote.
Okay, thank you.
For calling to you.
Okay.
I'm going to give everybody a copy of it, so that everybody has it.
And before you sit back down, do you mind just saying your name? Before you live on the record?
My name is Lynette Keating.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. Announcements by the board.
Yes, I have an announcement.
From my right.
I would just like to thank all the staff and the families that came out to Special News Resource, the last one for this year, over at Lu Canzig last Thursday, that was 50 families plus, and all the presenters. Thank you so much. And also, to thank all those Valley View people that I saw at Support Day for Families in Transition for Will County. And as you will see, before you look at the website, I have 50 years of experience doing hula hoops, so that's why somebody got a picture of me. But to thank all of the Valley View people that came out, and especially Ms. Bosnick, said that would be her last Support Day for Families in Transition, because she is retiring. So, again, thank everybody, and especially a thank you and a goodbye to Ms. Bosnick.
I'd like a couple of things. I'd like to thank Dr. Mitchum for meeting with the R.C. Hill also. As far as the aides, I totally understand what you're going through. We're waiting to see who does get hired back. I was riffed for five years in a row. My husband was riffed and never came back to the district, so I understand what you're going through. But we do have to wait until we get through the whole process of the union and who gets hired back and who doesn't. So, we do understand what you're going through. And of course, a special thank you to the two board members who are going... And of course, a special thank you to the two board members who are going off tonight for all their help as I came on to the board, and for all the work that they do for the board.
Deb, you didn't need any help. You came ready.
I'd like to send a thank you out to RC Hill for adjusting their schedule because of my annoying work schedule, but I look forward to spending the day with you guys tomorrow. And just be gentle, that's all I ask. And I'd like to take a minute before I turn it over to President Quigley. Mr. Venegas, thank you isn't enough to what I could say to help you. I have the pleasure of sitting on another board with you, and I've learned a lot, and your passion is unmatched when it comes to families who need, kids who need, anybody. And I will take that to my grave with me for you. So I thank you, and I look forward to our continued friendship. Mr. Gugis, I'm not going to get all teary-eyed, but over the last two years, I've had the opportunity to get to know Rick through a couple of mutual friends and on this board. And I would challenge anybody in our community to care as much as this gentleman over here for the kids in our district. And I thought I cared, living in this district since 1986. And I, my care fits in his fingernail. So this board will miss people like him. Looking forward to working with the new people coming on board, but these shoes cannot be filled. And I just ask for patience, because it will be a work in progress. But Rick, thank you for your time. I appreciate that.
Well, President, I am accustomed of 17 years on a board member that they come back for the first half of the board, so I'll keep all my words until then. And Rick said he's not coming, so you'll have to hear my words over there. I'll send them to him.
So I have, we have, actually, I think probably everybody here, some may or may not know this, but the two gentlemen who are leaving the board next meeting, this meeting, whatever it is, they came to fill a vacancy that was created on the board, one due to a death and one due to somebody moving and resigning. And the public thought enough of them, number one, the board thought enough of them to bring them on after interviewing several people in the community who wished to be on the board. Secondly, the community thought enough to reelect them to sit on the board. I personally want to say thank you, because I know the time that you take away from your families. You're here to improve the district. Everybody's got an issue or two or 10 or 100, whatever their issues are, but you guys took the time to immerse yourself into the district, to learn what the issues were, and to make a difference in people's lives. I want to thank your families for allowing you to do that. I know Becky's here this evening, and I think your wife will be here next meeting, is that correct, Leo? You have to understand, we don't get paid. You get a lot more grief than you get accolades, that's for sure. But I want to thank you both for your service, and I could go on and on and on. And I will tear up at some point if I stay here and talk long enough. But I do understand what goes into it, and the late-night phone calls, and hey, what are we doing about this? And is this going to be okay? Leo would say, is this going to be okay? And Rick would say, what are we doing? Is this the right thing? And these comments, and it was constant. It wasn't just the first week there on the board, the first month. This has been going on for six, seven, eight years now. And I, from the bottom of my heart, and I want to thank you from the district, and from the families, and my family, for your friendship and your dedication to this school district. Because I've sat on a board with some people who maybe have been here previously, who didn't put in the time as you gentlemen have, and I will certainly never forget it. And if you ever, ever, ever need a professional or personal reference, please don't hesitate to ask me. So that said...
Thank you, sir.
We have some wonderful parting gifts. Come on down!
Chuck, what are we here?
Not a long dedicated plaque or anything. It just says, Leo Venegas, Leo, Leonel Leo Venegas, thank you for your dedicated service, 2011 to 2015. And Rick says the same thing, only he was here a little longer. Richard "Rick" Gugis III, I didn't know you were a third. VVSD Board of Education Vice President, thank you for your dedicated service, 2009 to 2015. Don't forget your bags.
I'd like to stand next to these guys.
At least in my mind, I look at them. I know that Rick has some words he would like to say and address the audience, the public, the board. Just a few words.
Well, I got to keep it short, because Dr. Wood won't go out with me afterwards. He texted me today and said he wouldn't come out if I didn't keep it short. You know, we've been through a lot over these last six years, and sometimes this is really difficult. You know, I think of times when students pass away, or times that we just have unbelievable struggles. And we pull through it as a community, you know, and that's what I remember. I remember us pulling through difficult times as a community. But it's not always toil. I wore this suit today because sometimes things that are difficult at the time turn out to be funny down the road. One of the last times I wore this suit was when we had an outdoor graduation at Bolingbrook High School. And it rained, and when I mean it rained, you would have thought we were in the Amazon and it was a monsoon. It rained, and it rained, and it rained, and this suit still has a little bit of that water smell, and Dr. Mitchum, you never did give me that dry cleaning. So, you know, but as I think about this being my last board meeting, I think I got to strike another match. I got to start anew, and need to embrace my promotion back from public servant to sovereign citizen. You know, to the communities of Romeoville and Bolingbrook, I was humbled that you put your trust in me to represent you here on the Valley View School Board. The guiding light for the decisions I made while I was on the board were for the interest of our children and community. Sometimes that was easy, and sometimes that wasn't. I have so many people to thank, and I won't be able to list you all. I see folks like Patty Chow out there that I met at Bog, serving in our community. Mr. Brown, who I can never get Mr. Brown to call me Rick, ever. He's never once called me Rick. But who I want to thank first is my brilliant wife. You are the smartest person I have ever met, yet somehow I still don't always listen to you. One of the things that I didn't listen to your counsel on was running for school board again. You told me to run, but in the end, when I made the choice not to do it, you supported me, and you have been my biggest support, both when I decided not to run and when I ran. While I was out advocating for other children, you were advocating for ours. You took care of them, you fed them, you tucked them in at night when I couldn't. And I don't know what I can do to ever thank you for that. My children are here, well, two of them, one is on his way. Thank you for all your support and encouragement. Maya, yeah, you. You always understood when it was school board Monday, or some event at a school or another meeting, that in your words, I was out helping kids. You were always supportive, except that one time, you wrote a paper that it was my fault you had to take the map test. Mason's not here, but his strength of character and kindness always inspires me. He always has a heart for others and putting them first, with the occasional exception of his sisters. Karina, you're amazing. These past three years have seemed like we've always been together. I look forward to the next, I don't know how many years I got, maybe 20, 30. I look forward to them. I wanted to thank my ex-wife, she'll be here shortly with Mason, she has supported me. You know, when your ex-wife puts a sign in her yard supporting you for school board, it tells you something, right? To my fellow board members, I wish nothing but success, even through the toil, and there will be toil. The work you do will be arduous, but it will be worth it. Deb, your work ethic is amazing. You dive deep into the details, and you get that that's where the work happens. That's where the change happens. Dan, the word that comes to mind for me with you is heart. You have a tremendous heart. You have so much of it, but yet you find a way to remain practical. Crystal's not here, and she has just a tremendous amount of wisdom, and I hope she continues to speak more, not less. Leo, my man Leo, man, you have such an ability that I don't have to speak in short sentences and with clarity. You provide a question or a statement that sums up the point better than most. Your voice will be missed on this board. I will miss hearing you say, right? But I'll see you at RC Hill and occasionally at work. Liz, I wish you the best in your going forward here on the board. Steve, I don't know, man, we've been through a ton. We had some trying times on this board that most will never know. Your heart is in the right place, sir. I know it is. It's always, it always has. But more importantly, you've always acted with integrity. You backed many of my initiatives against great odds and pressured to do something else. And anytime I asked for your support, you gave it to me. You don't know what that means to me, Steve. I appreciate that. I wanted to thank a couple teachers, Ms. Workis and Ms. Abel. They've had my children in class, and they've let me wear the hat, both as a father to my kids and as a board member. Ms. Workis has done it three times, and that's not always an easy journey, and it hasn't always been easy, but those ladies definitely made it easy. Carrie Locke and Justin Gage, you demonstrate the greatness that the teaching profession is capable of. Ms. Kelly Allen, well, I haven't seen you in a while. When I first got on the board, I wanted to volunteer to help kids, and you stepped up and said, I'll take this crazy board member. And so you let me volunteer in your classroom, and you showed me how to tutor kids. You know, I'd like to thank Mayor John Noke of Romeoville, and Mayor Roger Claire Bolingbrook, and Bill, Mayor of the Supervisor of DePage Township. Mayor Noke routinely calls me at least once a week just to check in. He never asks me for anything. He just says, what can I do? Do you need any help? Mayor Claire has often been painted as some puppet master, however, the only thing Mayor Claire has ever asked me to do was do a good job. I thought he had tremendous courage and showed that when he backed me as a Romeoville resident over some Bolingbrook residents for the school board. He backed a guy who couldn't vote for him for people that could vote against him. I wanted to thank one group of people that almost never gets thanked, and routinely are criticized as district overhead, and fat that should be cut. I want to thank those administrators that work both inside and outside the schools every day. The ones I've gotten to know best sit on this stage. Shelley, Gary, Sharon, Rachel. But there are others, and I'll only name a few of them. There's Adam Herter over there, and Rachel Sletter, and Karen, and Elizabeth, and Ricardo, and Christie, and Astrid, and Dave Richards, and Joanne Berg, and Brandy, and so many others. Your work allows others to do the work that they do in the classroom, and you do it without fanfare. You take blame when the blame isn't your fault, and you defer credit when you deserve it. It has been my deep pleasure working and spending all those hours with you. I'm one that believes our district gives accolades away too easy. Whether it's PBIS tickets that reward children for behavior they were doing their own, or to our consistent need to reward hard work. Why isn't hard work just the expectation? Too often, we reward hard work and not outcomes. That may seem harsh, but trying is not the same as doing, and should not be rewarded as such. We celebrate titles, school board members, superintendent, principal, teachers. The title is the entrance exam. It means you have completed what it takes to earn the title, but the title alone does not mean that you are good at what you do. We need to judge that based on the outcome, that that hard work produces. Were we effective? Where we value add it? Are our kids better for it? That is our measure. This district is poised for greatness, and the greatness will be measured by the outcomes of our kids. The school district has one purpose, and one purpose only, to educate our children. Our responsibility is to always put them first, even when it comes at the expense of the adults. It's not the goal to come at the expense of the adults, but when it's in the best interest of kids, that's what we need to do. I can be a bull in a china top, in a china shop, but great things never come from comfort zones. Greatness comes from taking small steps to enact change, but the first step is to demand it. You know, I haven't mentioned someone at all, and most of you will never know how much me and him speak. If I said daily, that would be a gross underestimate. I was at Romeoville High School my first month on the board, meeting with the former principal, and I said, it sure seems like we track kids here, and track kids on tracks that aren't going to lead anywhere. And he looked at me and said, we do. And I couldn't understand why we would do that. And he said, I only know one person in the district that talks like this. You should meet this guy named Jim Mitchum. So I scheduled an appointment to meet Jim, and I was surprised when I met him. He was the first black school leader I met in Valley View. We shared stories of growing up, and while we grew up decades, I mean decades apart, the same thing that happened, that was happening in Valley View kids was attempted on us. The education system had attempted to marginalize us to being black males, for being black males. Wow, this is hard. And the only reason it wasn't allowed was the determination of our mothers to ensure, despite the obstacles of life and the institutionalized racism in schools, we would get a great education. That was the beginning of our relationship, Jim, and it grew from there. Our efforts to be vocal advocates for all the kids in Valley View so that students and parents of this district didn't have to fight those battles, our friendship grew personally as well. Jim, you have been there for me through these past years, both professionally and personally. We've known each other's children. My children happen to love you deeply, and we enjoy spending time together. The funny thing is, we haven't talked much this past week. We've avoided this looming day. I miss you a little bit. It's only been acknowledged through a text or a very nice Facebook post you put up today. Jim, you gave me the framework for what I had experienced and what I wanted to combat in our district. You gave me the research, and you answered countless questions. Your heart for children in this district is beyond comprehension. You have taken less money than any other superintendent in a large unit district in the state. You have always dealt with more undeserved angst for putting kids first, always. But through it all, you have remained a staunch leader, both positive and you're a visionary for our children. You have been my closest friend, but through all the bonding and family conversations and family time, we hold each other accountable to always put kids first. It's my favorite part. The one person I can count on to hold me accountable to my values is you. We always debate the issues, but at the end, we always let the best interest of kids be the decision-maker. That is what I enjoyed about our relationship, Jim, that it's honest. And I can thank you for all you've been to this district, but more importantly, I can thank you for all you've been to me. I look forward to redefining our relationship outside of Valley View. It is maybe the sole bright spot of leaving. Thank you.
I left my agenda someplace. Where are we at? Any announcements by the board? Any announcements by the administration?
I did, but I can't. Thank you, Rick. Thank you, Leo. From the bottom of my heart, I appreciate your selfless service to the students and staff and administration of Valley View School District. Have much more to say later, but I'm afraid to right now, so thank you.
You don't have a pause for tears in your statement?
I'm not going to do that. Try anyway.
Any announcements by the public?
I'm sorry, I do have one announcement. I do echo the same heartfelt, sincere thanks, and thank you for pushing us in our comfort zones and always striving to make everything better. In the interest of business, we do want to remind our families that May 8 is the deadline for registration for summer learning experience, so we encourage our families to contact your school or visit our website online, www.vvsd.org, for more information, and get our elementary students signed up for summer learning experience.
I did find my notes. I do have one announcement. Relay for Life is coming up. I think we have, do we have a link to it? Larry, someplace? No? For cancer, please reach out to your local community, Relay for Life, Bolingbrook, Romeoville, they both have one going. Ville, they both have one going on. They need walkers, they need teams, they need whatever you can do to help, great cause, take it for somebody who's lost somebody to cancer recently, and somebody who's in our family is going through it right now, please do what you can do, five bucks, ten bucks, twenty bucks, walk, whatever it is, anything you can do, reach out to Relay for Life and, and do your thing if you can. It's a lot of fun, too, they, they make great events, and there's, they have cheering on section for the, for survivors, and that, which is a lot of fun, and there's just a lot of great things that come of it. I didn't write down a lot of notes what I was going to say to these guys, because I'm like Jim, if I started going down that path, I would have to put pause for tears, pause for whatever. But again, I want to thank you from up here. You guys did such an outstanding job for this district, and you will be sorely missed, but again, as I told you both, you know, I know you're only a phone caller and email away, and I certainly look forward to staying engaged.
I actually just have one more statement, because I know I may not see Mr. Gugis, but probably at work. You're right, I'm going to make this short. For me, it's not, I, I don't have as many kind words to say, but I will say this, I'm not going anywhere, right? I, more than anything, I still am a member of the community. It won't be from this side, but I'll definitely be supporting our school district and the multiple community organizations that we have out there. It's, it's been great. I do appreciate all of the support from the community, from the local, our, you know, our teachers, our staff, the administration, everyone, but I, I do want to say, Rick, that it has been, it was fun serving with you, and, and I, if, if I don't see you here, I know I'll see you at work, and I'll see you around, but I just want to make sure that I'm not as, as emotional as most people would say. I have a lot of passion when it comes to the important things, but for goodbyes, I'm not going anywhere. I want to make that very clear. I may not be on the board, but the Romeo Ville community will still have a voice on that side. The Hispanic community will still have a voice here in this school district, because I'm a little disappointed we don't have, we won't have a Hispanic up here on this board, but we will still have a voice in this community. I am not going away. Just want to make sure that's clear, in case anybody missed it.
Motion to adjourn would be in order.
So moved.
Second. Motion and second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same have it, same have it, same sign. We stand adjourned. Enjoy your evening. Thank you.
Did you realize that they stuck there for you to sign it? Okay. That's okay, I just want to make sure.